Okay, we are live. We are live on Facebook and we are live on Zoom. So take it away, Mr. McLeod.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Good evening and welcome everyone to the August 9, 2023 meeting of the Class Public Committee, but all members who are present will indicate so in roll call. Mr. Carr.
Present.
Mr. Kearney.
Present.
Ms. Leskey.
Present.
Mr. Dial is not present due to professional obligations, so I'll be running the meeting in his stead. All who are willing and able, please rise for the allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone. We're conducting the meeting as usual in hybrid format. So if you're at home and participating virtually, feel free to utilize the Q and A feature to communicate with us. All those who are in attendance, please just simply raise your hand if you'd like to say something or add to the conversation. Moving into the public comment section of the agenda, this section of the agenda, just to remind everyone every single time, is reserved for questions, comments, concerns, a bunch of discussion that are not related to something that's already on the agenda. So if you have something that is related to the agenda, excuse me, an item that's already on the agenda, please just wait until we arrive to that point in the meeting and then raise your concern so that we can address it. We'll give a few seconds for people to populate that Q and A field if they're sitting virtually.
Watching.
Doesn't look like you have any.
They're busy pulling themselves away from the beach.
District employees, so. Dr. Scollins, are you able to see it right now?
I am. We actually don't have any really many attendees.
Okay.
And no, and no, and no.
Not, not surprising, given the time of year. So we'll move right into our invited guests. And Dr. Sullivan, I should pretend as schools, I'd ask you to please address the first item here where we're going to introduce a new key member of our administration and leadership team.
Absolutely. I'm honored to introduce Mr. Roberts. If you could come on up and take a seat there. We are, we're excited to have Rock Roberts with us. This is a position that we've been talking about for quite some time. And I again want to thank the school committee for allowing this position. You know, we've hit a point where, where we are really looking at data and how that's going to inform our curriculum decisions. And we're also moving strongly into our evaluation, which are all three very important components of, of teaching and learning. So little intro for Mr. Roberts. I'm excited to welcome and introduce Rock Roberts as the Director of Data Curriculum and Evaluation for Class Public Schools. Rock comes to us with over 25 years of experience as a teacher and educational leader, including his most recent role as Director of English and Reading, PK 12, and Brain Tree. Rock is also currently enrolled in a doctoral program at the University of South Carolina regarding educational practice and innovation with a concentration in education systems improvement. He'll be a wonderful addition to the staff and in his recent, and I'm sorry, in this new position to Class Public Schools, Rock will be working closely with leadership and teachers to look closely at achievement and social emotional wellness data across the district. He will facilitate data dialogue, data dialogues with all stakeholders, that's the school committee, district and building leadership, families, and of course, students. And he will be an advocate for needed outcomes based on the data. That could include the advocating for, for new positions. Rock will also work closely with Dr. Scollins, leaders, some of whom are here today, and teachers to update curriculum guides and to create needed benchmark assessments in all disciplines. Finally, Rock will help evaluate staff and I believe he'll serve as a wonderful resource for teachers and also for our leadership team. Rock's position began formally on July 1, 2023, and I wanted to take the opportunity to welcome Rock to Class Public Schools and congratulate him and his family on this, this really nice achievement.
Give him a big skipper welcome. Do any of the members of the committee have any questions for either Dr. Sullivan or our new membership and leadership team? Please ask them at will.
We're glad you're here.
But I'm glad to be here.
Looking forward to it all year. So we, we are a very active resource for you at this point. So anything you need from us, but we want to support you in your efforts and we're very glad you're here. And you have an incredibly cool name. Really cool seating.
They, they wouldn't let me in Hollywood, so I had to, I had to go into public school.
For you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
What else? I'll say, Mr. Roberts, we're really happy to have you because your hiring, I think, marks not only a step towards better district administration and teaching and learning overall, and will assist our superintendent, assistant superintendent with delegation of a very critical role and impactful role and also a very, a very burdensome one if taken on in addition to the superintendent's and superintendent roles. So we're really excited to have you. I've expressed this to you personally, this, this thought. But also your hiring, I think, also is indicative of our administration's responsiveness to the needs of our families in that there's been a great demand for a lot more transparency surrounding data. And, you know, for that reason, I, I think that the family should understand that, that we'll be even more robust with that, in that area, in that field, that arena, moving forward. And I also think that evaluation will be critical to improvement of the district. I think that it's really difficult to have a extremely meaningful and effective evaluation protocol if it is being divided amongst, you know, the duties that, that already burdened memberships of the leadership team have. Not to say that we haven't been able to do that, you know, with effectiveness, but I think it really helps to have an individual that's specializing on that, in that. And, and I think it'll help with all district staff to know that you're sort of the point person on that. And, you know, I, so I'm really, really excited about what this means for the district. I think it will, you know, perhaps not directly, given, you know, what, what you do, but it'll certainly indirectly improve the overall district. It'll, it'll yield, I think, immeasurable benefit to the districts and then therefore to our students, obviously, right? And, and to our staff. So thank you for, for your, you know, your, your excitement and your fervor for the, for the job and for taking the role. And we're very excited to work with you. I know you're, you're highly recommended. Dr. Sullivan has, has indicated along with Dr. Scollins that they're very excited to work with you. And so thank you for being here.
Thank you. Been a nice, nice start. We spent some time as a leadership team, meeting with Rock and kind of collaborating on sort of Rock's entrance into the district. We want to make sure that teachers view him as a really important resource. And for us, it's sort of boots in the ground with a lot of important work we're doing around curriculum and looking at the data. You can expect updates at this level on both of those items as well as, you know, of course, as you mentioned, evaluation. So I think it's a, it's a paramount role. And I think a nice key piece, and I view it as a link, kind of that might have been missing.
For sure, for sure.
In our, in, in the efficacy of our leadership team to, to really drive change in the district with staff, like really not, not doing a two-step, but really collaborating with them. And I think Rock will end up being a wonderful thought partner for, for staff members in a lot of different ways, but obviously clearly in the three areas that we've designated as well. So it's exciting.
It is.
Very exciting.
Would you like to say anything?
I just, it, you know, it's been a, it's been a great transition, just kind of hearing and learning, meeting the team, getting to know everybody. So much upside. There's so many good things happening in this district. And to be a part of that and be a part of this team is a, it's a great experience. We had our leadership retreat today. So Rock got a full, full taste of our, was a team, we had a next team building activity where we built boats on a kind of a project-based learning, like we do with our students. And it was, it was, you get a full taste of it. So it's a nice, nice activity to start off our excellent retreat today.
Now, is the Director of, when I call it DCE.
Yeah.
Reporting to Assistant Superintendent or Superintendent. Okay.
He, he, he reports directly to Leslie.
Well, I think that makes a lot of sense, given the fact that Dr. Scollins was doing a lot of what we're going to see the Director of DCE do. So there's a lot of, I think, seamlessness there and you'll be able to offer, I think, a lot of support and guidance as Mr. Roberts acclimates himself to, to our district. So I'm, I'm happy to hear that. I was, I was hoping that would be the answer because I think.
And you just created an acronym, which means you're definitely involved with education now, isn't it?
Yes, yes, exactly, exactly.
I like that.
It's, it's kind of a long title other one.
It is.
But an important one. And I'm thrilled to have Rock here and I look forward to all our collaboration. He's already started.
Yes, of course.
We have codes against, because he's off right next to it.
Oh, right. That's right. Yeah, that's right. That's right. It's great.
It's gonna be great.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Thank you.
Dr. Sullivan, I'll let you take this entire portion of the agenda so you can introduce the members of your leadership team as we.
I sure will. And as I, I, I don't have the opportunity enough to do this, I just want to stop by thanking the four principals for the unbelievable work they do every day when the kids are here and the staff is here. But there's a lot of work that goes into preparing for the year and you can really see, I, I feel like unfortunately sometimes, someone said this to me and it's true, for us, June is Friday, July is Saturday, and August is Sunday in a weekend, you know? And we're in Sunday and we're moving. And we're, you know, we're really preparing a lot for the start of the year. Their work is just, is just inspiring to me as the superintendent and really makes the, the district tick. So I want to thank them. And then I were, today we're going over our handbooks. And I also want to thank Dr. Scollins for working with the teams closely. But it should be noted that this work comes from the school councils. And that's, that they also worked with the handbook changes. So I guess we'll go, I always feel like I have Principal Farrell go last. I'm gonna have her go first.
I'd like that.
If you would, Principal Farrell, and you can just maybe walk, I'll put it on the screen and we can walk the team through the changes. Some of the changes are, are, you know, minimal, just corrections and, but we'll, we can talk about some of the more substantive ones.
Yeah, I think I just asked Principal Farrell, Scott, Milton, Sullivan to just, obviously, just focus on the changes and sort of summarize them for us. I don't think we need to get through the entire handbook.
Correct.
Yeah, no, no, as much as I also love you guys, you know, it's a summer meeting. Let's keep it light.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for having us here this evening. So most of the changes that we had were small, little tweaks. And the update to the staff list is always one that we have. We removed the hyperlinks relevant to the district family handbook, because we no longer have a district family handbook. Updated district calendar. Addition to the assessment area where early literacy screening was put in. So there's a conversation about what early literacy screening is. Updated wording to include all grades and have trimester progress reports. Kindergarten is moving to trimester progress reports this year. So they are going to get three read more cards than they typically will in the past when we got them too. Included process for all visitors. We're checking into the building, page 23. We've had our process and as you all know, the best view is being worked on at the Ausgood. Updating the process would be making sure that parents know in the, in the event of an activity, we may have someone standing at the door to help them come in, make it pull on a little faster as far as checking licenses there, but it's up to the discretion of the principal as to how we want to do it. The change grade levels for school screenings to include only Ausgood. In our handbook, we had listed, nurses had listed screenings that happened at the end of law. So we just took out the day of law, so we don't want people, these are all screenings that are going to happen at Ausgood. Update the link for the food allergies on page 24. Update plagiarism information on page 28 to include what plagiarism is. And addition of language to possible consequences on page 30. And that specifically. The possible consequences, we got down to the last bullet, there's expulsion in accordance with the Massachusetts general law and out of school suspension in accordance with the Massachusetts laws.
Any questions? The members for the handbook changes, please feel free to ask questions at will. I don't need to call on anyone.
I've got a quickie. Maybe it's not a quickie. And this actually applies to all the handbooks, which I read through this afternoon. The rationale for not using, say, he, him, they, or she, he, theirs, in terms of, if there's an assumption written within these handbooks of a binary gender identification. And so I was just wondering whether or not the district would think about either just using their as the pronoun or using he, she, they when you're referring to people. Just as, I think it sends a big message about inclusiveness without being extraordinarily disruptive. I understand that these are probably ready to go out, but maybe for future thought.
Yeah, I think that's, that's fair. And that's something we can certainly discuss and I, I would agree with you.
I think we did. I think it doesn't say, I don't think it uses any pronouns. I think it's students.
Yeah, I'm looking, can you point us to, because I don't know where I have pronouns. Sure, I think, gosh. Happened to catch me a couple of times.
I think, we, the, the point, I think, is that we, we are, that's a really good point you made. I think we want to be conscious of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
So if we missed it, I think it, I think you hit it on the head. It's a product of making sure that we had the, the substance correct and maybe missing it. So we can actually go back and look.
And I'm happy to actually do that and, you know, separately. I didn't want to stir the pot. I just, as I was sort of looking through and just kind of just doing some double checks.
No, that's in the spirit of.
Some he, she's. And maybe it's also in the legal terminology that's sometimes used, but it seems kind of like a, some low hanging fruit.
I thought I remembered Mrs. Kaleri for raising that point in connection with this. So I think it was like, at least at one point, it was partially addressed, but like, I, I'm sure.
Well, we, we really didn't have to use.
She would have raised.
Because we just, we were just using the word students.
Here it is in the allergy section. It says, family available in the health office for his slash her life threatening allergy. So that would be easy. It would just, it would be easy just to say in the health office for a life threatening allergy.
Is that a policy though? Oh, is it written in the handbook? Remember, we can't change policy only the school committee.
No, the policy would be hyperlink, so we'll put that here.
Okay. That's something we can do.
It's an easy search. And, and these don't get handed out as hard copies, so that's an easy thing for us all to edit. Because if they're in there, it was an oversight.
Yeah, I really wasn't reading super carefully. It just was one of those things that as I was sort of looking through. But your eye caught it.
No, we appreciate that. And that's, that's, that's one of the reasons we bring it to you, you know.
But otherwise, I think they're excellent. Mrs. Farrell, we know that the kindergarteners are now getting free progress reports a year. I think that's a lovely change and a really nice way to communicate with the newest families in the district. So.
The teacher information that we're giving our students earlier in the year, just to get it.
Thank you for your hard work on you. So I didn't mean to stir the pot.
Oh, no.
Yeah, no.
Anyone else? I was just, I don't have any. Never mind. I just want to make sure the format for at least elementary schools are the same. We talked about that before. And I think Principal Farrell and Sullivan had worked it out. Might have been a previous edition that had that. I think they already figured that out. So that's why I wasn't going to say anything, but I just said that so that you knew what I was thinking.
Yeah. Well, we were, we were.
It sounded weird otherwise.
Yes. And we were also, we were super conscious, but having the format be the same of the school improvement plan.
Yes.
Not as much in the handbook.
But we did. We had elementary aligned and we had middle and high school aligned.
Right, right. So I think that, that was old, that was old news. I think I was.
Okay, so if it's okay, I will thank you, Principal Farrell.
Thank you, Principal Farrell.
And Principal Sullivan, in line with our.
Can I ask a piece question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you have a question?
No, no. Do you want to vote on these as all together?
I think we should vote on them all together.
Vote on them all together.
Okay, great.
I just, actually, before Principal Sullivan steps up.
Yes.
As to your general question, you don't have to take the seat back. What's, so what's the plan for the teddy bear campaign? I'm curious. What is it?
You bring your teddy bear and, or stuffy. It's going to be out with the ice cream social. And my son will be the doctor checking teddy bears.
Like the Disney show.
Doctor, Mr. Stuffer.
Yes.
Yes. They'll get a certificate saying the bear is all set. And I'm hoping that parents will bring a picnic to eat, a picnic dinner or a sandwich, whatever, to eat before they have the ice cream. And we're going to, the teddy bear picnic song. I'm hoping we can get somebody to sing that in a book. So.
And they just need to remember not to give their teddy bear too much ice cream.
Right. My son was hoping that we wouldn't find any contagious diseases. And I told him, even if we find them, we're not reporting them. So not to worry.
All right. I like it. I like it. And you, you can sing, Principal Farrell.
Yeah, well, we're not going to do that. Nope. That would hurt everybody. But yeah, it's something that I used to take my children to with my mom years ago up at Portland and East. And, and it was just, I was going through pictures the other day and I saw it and I brought back some little sweet memories. So looked them in and he's coming down.
Good. It's, I, I, you know me, I love new ideas. So it's great. And how's the kindergarten intro thing going?
Jumpstart.
Jumpstart? Finished.
It was great.
Finished yesterday and it went really well.
Did they ride buses for that?
They, they do a tour, right?
No, they just get on a bus. We don't, we don't take them anymore.
I was telling, I was telling Dr. Scollins that I asked Ray, the bus manager, if he could come down yesterday. It was for three hours because the kids were there an hour, three different groups. And I didn't realize that I wasn't clear enough. So they came down, he said, he had the first group because where am I taking them? I'm like, you're not taking them anywhere. It was off three hours. I thought we were going to Boston. I'm like, no. My heart stopped. I'm like, no, 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 no. So they got on the bus. I had to see what the bus was like.
Went well? Everything went well?
We had, I think we had up to 94 students that attended out of 107.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a no brainer.
What a nice gesture for them.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get 100% participation in no time, I'm sure.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you, Principal Farrell. Sorry, sorry about that, Principal Sullivan. Come on up.
This will be quick and redundant. I, similar to Principal Farrell, we have an updated staff directory. We removed the references and hyperlinks to the district and family handbook. We, I did link the informational letter regarding the back loop part of drop-off procedures and pickup in the car pickup section, because that is always a hot topic with families not feeling confident with the zipper approach. And the families that do do it feel that they are being evil eyed by the families that don't do it. And so trying to.
It's kind of double stacking the cars.
Yeah, they do two rows coming into the back parking lot. And then you're supposed to, every other, the left lane is supposed to every other car in. And so people feel like, hey, and so it's testy.
It is. It does get.
It'll test. And so.
But it serves a purpose because it, it helps create less traffic on the road.
Exactly. And so I think the old timers, you know, like stand your ground. So, but just getting additional communication. So I always send that letter out every year, but now it's in the handbook. Just the attendance section needed to be updated. It didn't reference both the 10 and the 15 day attendance letters. It just mentioned, I think, five. Just noting that there's no longer a form that comes home to be signed for handbook acknowledgement. It's published in Aspen. Added executive functioning skills as a component of homework purpose. The previous heading had been volunteers and chaperones and added school visitors. And then it goes into detail about our ID requirements for accessing the building, because we do still encounter families that, that don't bring their proper ID. And then just language to school council meetings. I was looking at the Massachusetts rules and always feeling guilty. You know, there's certain times of the year with school council where there's really not a lot going on. And we'll bring in guests and things like that. We, we had at least against Carlin and things like that. But I just wanted it to reflect that, that, you know, there's once or twice a year when we don't hold a meeting. And the early literacy screening, similar to Ausgood. And again, the code of conduct, also similar to Ausgood.
You can see where our handbooks are much better now. I mean, we think about the first year we did this, there were so many changes and massive changes. And now we're really refining them and, and making sure we don't have, you know, we have the latest language that we should have that's updated to laws and regulations. Not massive changes anymore.
Any questions for Principal Sullivan?
No, just thank you. It's so funny you mentioned that because that was, you, you do pull up and you're like, what's that person doing? But you do, after, I think, after the first day, you should know that's kind of how it works.
Yeah. And I try and be out there as much as possible to like guide the zipper. But, yeah.
But it is nice to get them off the road. Because like, you gotta, you know, in town, you just gotta avoid those streets with the kids up front because you're stuck there.
It's a tough audience. Very critical.
Crowd controlled.
We, we, we will have hecklers removed. How is the learning commons project going?
It's going really well. So it's painted. The moldings are in on the floor. We just are in a holding pattern until furniture arrives. And we'll put it together as quickly as possible. Our book edits are done. Facilities has been amazing. I have to give them a huge shout out in terms of their management of the project. And I kind of like, okay, these are the things that need to get done. And it seemed like every time I walked in there, somebody was there doing something. They kept track of things. We're waiting. We, once we have the, we're waiting for the PO so we can order the technology. And once we do that, then the technology company will tell us about the wiring we need to do. So we're waiting for that. And then facilities will do that wiring that we need for our things, like our screen and things. And we also have had amazing support in the CEF. Shout out to Stephanie Allison, who has been working pro bono. Her specialty is interior design of children's spaces. So you really can't get better than that. And she has been amazing. And just her design, I mean, to the point now where I like, don't want to make a decision. Like I had bought fabric for the bulletin boards and I sent her the link to Lake Shore and said, could you pick out borders?
And I have to say, for Alex to say that, she's good.
I was like, I want you to pick out the borders.
Very, very true.
So she's been amazing. So we're excited. And next Wednesday, we have the dedication with the Macamare family. We have a little brunch in the courtyard. And so that'll, it'll be great. So we do, you know, we are realistic. We're hoping an October opening of the space. I don't think it's realistic that it'll be open for the start of the school. Since we haven't seen the furniture. The, the STEM space of the Innovation Commons, that will be open. So that furniture was ordered because it was, it was a separate grant. And so that furniture is in place. And so I'm actually placing that furniture tomorrow and that, that room. So our computer classes will take place in the new tech space on the start of the school year.
What about the library classes?
The library classes, we will probably do like a traveling cart or something like that.
In classrooms?
In classrooms. Yeah, we will.
And we anticipate about a month.
Yeah, yeah. I think, I mean, really, once that furniture comes, I've already told my husband, like, you're on deck. Like, we've got to get this thing together. You laugh and call, we're going to get the softball dads.
When, when we get the furniture, we'll get that up.
Yeah, we'll get it up and running. And that's really what it is.
Well, if you think about it, it's a specialist, right? So there's, you're only getting per, per kid. It's only a few times a month. It's not that much.
And it doesn't impact the ability to.
And this is something that's really worth the wait. It's going to be awesome. And it's such a beautiful space. Wait till you see what this will add to it.
Just do some new paint.
Yeah, paint, yeah.
Yeah, it's one of the nicer rooms in the district.
And I think as this was at one point not used to its full capacity.
Right. I'm really excited about the layout of the furniture and how it's going to have like this whole learning area where meetings like this can be held, staff meetings, but also classes. Like you could have a class in library and you could have another class using the ViewSonic and doing other things. And then moving the computer space adjacent, now you've got a research space.
You think of how wonderful the, this space is and then how, and Ausgood space is so nice too with the reading duck and the way that's designed. And I think now we'll have, you know, every single school.
This conversion to more modern day sort of learning spaces, right? As opposed to the more antiquated spaces that, you know, we have throughout our district, correct? Especially this building.
You got it.
The courtyard principals, I'm sorry, Mr. Kirney.
No, no, I was just going to say that we had talked about having school committee meetings at other schools.
Right.
That is the absolute intention.
Because we had talked about that, so.
Yeah, we'll have the equipment starting to order. I'm working with Valley because it's an older device that releases Ausgood up in the library. So the cart doesn't, looks like it may not work with that poly. So we're just trying to figure those pieces out. So they're doing, they're helping us with all of that.
We, I feel confident that we'll be doing that this year. It brings, it's a nice touch because it really highlights the, the learning communities we have in each wonderful school. So it'll be nice.
Oh, and I want to add one other piece that we'll be working on through the school year as, as part of the agreement with. Oh, and I want to add one other piece that we'll be working on through the school year, as, as part of the agreement with the CEF, is filming an art installation, and, um, the student body will participate in that, so we, we will timeline that out. Cool. Um, and the expectation is, you know, over the course of the school year, we'll work with our art teachers, so every child, I don't know if you remember the spiral in our courtyard now that we did after COVID, and so it'll be something along those lines where every child will have a little bit, an opportunity to participate in the art installation that will reflect, um, the space, but also Mrs. McAmara's, just.
I can't thank the McAmara family enough for this, it's a, it's a lovely gesture, and, um, something that's gonna have an impact on generations of kids to come.
Sure, sure, um, I, knowing you, you're already really on top of this, but, uh, can you just make sure that, like, I don't know who, I, I know.
DPW?
If it's there on our study, so that, that courtyard is ready to go on day one, so it's about learning what weather's nice.
Chris Murray in the DPW, I emailed him a few weeks ago, and I will follow up with him, and he knows I want it, like, trimmed way down.
Like I said, I think those courtyards are gonna be tricky.
If I can give another shout-out, um, Dee Riley is a parent in the district, and she is my one-woman garden committee. And she has been there at least once a week this summer, and she actually just, and also to Kennedy Gardens, she went to Kennedy Gardens, and, um, they, you know, got all the plantings and things like that, so the, the boxes are already fresh, there's new planters, and then she's going to, you know, push that, that area's all tidy and lovely, and we just are waiting for the DPW that'll come on either end of this week or early next week.
She's a Deer Hill parent?
Yes, she'll have a sixth grader next year, so don't steal. Which is a fourth, incoming fourth grader and an incoming sixth grader, Dee Riley. And, um, she's been, I mean, just so, she's also been instrumental with getting our composting and other, she's our liaison with Holly Hill. Um, really always just so ready to help with anything.
I'm a, was he an interior design professional that was helping?
Stephanie Allison.
Okay.
And she is a new Deer Hill parent, I, she's, um, has been a. Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you. Any further questions for Principal Sullivan?
Thank you, for your willingness to translate this into fourteen different languages, I hope you never have to do them.
Oh, is that on my hand, is my hand over?
If you need this book translated, please contact the main office, and they list fourteen languages.
Yeah.
Oh, it is?
Alex has been really working on this.
Yeah, I have, I'm really gonna do a link up. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
All kidding aside, we will translate it.
Yeah.
Today's age, it's not.
Of course, absolutely, I was, I was, I was kidding about. Yes, and, uh, next, moving up, um, to our next age group, we have Principal Mills.
Hi, thanks for having us, uh, I'm Salton, to talk about handbooks. And, like it was already said, handbooks kind of reflect the changes either in the world or the school, kind of in our prior year, and I think most of the changes that we have in our handbook for this year, uh, took it into those, those buckets. First is the general school information, calendars, you know, faculty table. Um, the updated visitor section, um, this is one of those things where we went back and read the handbook and thought, you know what? This doesn't really reflect the practice. In case a parent was curious about, well, how do I visit the school, we included language about, uh, the lobby guard, the security system, requiring a photo ID, uh, we just added that. Once again, just to really make sure that parents, uh, especially if they're using the handbook, would know when they come to the high school what they need for a successful visit. Uh, also, uh, the section about communication and how important it is. Uh, it said, teacher conferences arranged by appointment are a good vehicle for communication. It didn't reflect the fact that starting last year, the high school and middle school now have parent-teacher conferences, so we inserted language, just referring to the fact that we now have, uh, parent conferences scheduled by the district. Uh, plagiarism, we had updated our plagiarism policy for a couple of things. One is, when we looked at the language, we realized that it was, it, it's still useful, but we felt like it was, um, maybe a, a little bit, uh, high school-oriented, maybe a little bit research paper-oriented, and wouldn't apply to every situation that we would find in the middle school. So we used the, the most recent, the ninth edition of the MLA handbook, the writers' research paper, and, and that, the definition of plagiarism is simply uh, presenting another person's ideas, words, or entire work as your own, which I thought makes, you know, if we want to make sure kids can understand plagiarism, we have to make sure that we're teaching them what it is in an accessible, you know, form. Um, we also did include, though, that, uh, we want to clarify that another person, and this definition's not limited to a single person, it may be two or more persons, as well as, and this is important, a digital resource such as, but not limited, uh, to an artificial intelligence program. It's the new world that a year ago says that, I had never even really heard of, I never thought that we would have artificial intelligence is so accessible so quickly, and now, um, it's just, you know, it's just something that will work and, and integrate, and we'll be fine with, but we wanted to make sure that the handbook, uh, reflected, uh, the fact that that's not okay, it's still plagiarism. Um, we also, um, sort of changed the way, when we do have an instance of plagiarism, the way we handle the discipline. Previously, it, it, the, uh, language, the first penalties would be determined by the teacher and consultation with the department chair. We wanted to make sure that CMS administration was included, so we inserted that under letter E, I put in bold the language, just so that, um, the teacher and department chair would be supported by an administrator, uh, you know, especially with, it, it, there could be a disciplinary consequence. We also, as the administrator, might understand that the student had a, a similar mistake in another subject where the teacher and department chair might not have it. So we just felt it's just gonna help, um, students have the opportunity to, to learn about plagiarism and avoid it more effectively. Um, another piece with the changing world is cell phones. And we've always had the away-for-the-day practice, uh, in our, um, uh, is a, is a practice in the school and in the handbook. We went on, though, to sort of, uh, expand that, and I inserted the, the language, the, the person, the, the, the piece that we're adding is the fact that technology is becoming more sophisticated, and now we've got students who have smartwatches on their wrists. Um, you could bring your MacBook to school as your perfectly appropriate BYOD device, but there's a messaging app on it, so now I could just sit in class and just, uh, text, uh, whomever I want. So, it, it, you know, it gets to the point where you can't necessarily police every wrist, every device that might be in front of a child and how they're using it, so we just wanted a statement of our position that um, it's really important to use technology responsibly, and that's, that's what the, the statement is. We'll share it with parents as well, because we're asking parents to partner with us in, in helping kids, um, really, you know, follow this away-for-the-day practice. We, technology's so important in, in, in the uh, process of learning in our school, but it's just one part, and it's so important for kids to have time to interact face-to-face with one another and develop those interpersonal skills and relationships and not simply, at that age, you know, be, um, you know, completely overly focused on the technology. Uh, I'm on page four now, speaking of technology, we recognize that there wasn't anything in the handbook that would indicate to a parent or maybe a new family coming to, to our school that we were a BYOD school. Uh, so we just took basically the, the, the IT department's, uh, language around technology and the BYOD, um, practices and integrated that. Um, next, we kind of get into conduct, and, uh, the first cou- well, a couple of these are, we took our school committee policies and made sure that we were, uh, referencing them. Uh, one of the issues is bus violations, because the school committee policy is, uh, is very informative, so we put a link to the school committee policy on school bus behavior. Uh, we did the same for vandalism, I thought we have vandalism often, but we just wanted to make sure that it was available for parent, uh, parents and kids to see. Meal card violations, this is one of those sort of new things where, uh, the, the school committee does have a meal charge policy, and what we found is during the year, there were times where, uh, you know, you might have two kids who are good friends, and one gives his password, uh, for his meal card to a friend. The friendship sort of chills, they go their separate way, and one is maybe still kind of annoyed, so they keep charging things up, and there hadn't been anything in the handbook to reflect this behavior. Um, it's, I had never seen it, uh, but, uh, this is just one, you know, we just wanted to make sure it was accessible for for kids, and if we do have a problem with it, it's, it's easy to refer to in that case, as opposed to uh, checking the school committee policy. So we're not changing policy, we're just reflecting the school committee policy that was already, already, uh, there. Um, administrative responses to student behavioral issues. Um, we just, we updated the language to include restorative justice practices, uh, within administrative responses. Uh, tardiness consequences, we included a practice where we were finding it effective that when we did, it wasn't happening very often, but when we did have students who were tardy to school repeatedly, five times being the limit, we would, uh, assign an office detention, but we would do it as a before-school detention. So we would work with the family to make sure they got to school on time, and how we could sort of positively, uh, modify the behavior so that they were in school on time, and we just found it was effective, we wanted to make sure that it was, um, accessible for families. And then lastly, is co-curricular participation, we're really happy with the, the curricular offerings that were grown, but we wanted to make sure that families understood that, um, just like in other schools, that if, if, if you're absent from school, you can't come in after school to participate. So we, we just put that piece in. So, that's it, like I said, it's just some changes to reflect, uh, the world and things going on in school.
Any questions for Principal Mills? Thank you, Principal Mills, uh, just asking that, well.
I have a general question, I think, um, are all of the plans, um, books consistent with things like bus practice, or are they, they all sort of say the same general thing? Okay.
Yeah. Developmentally, I think, but, uh, I'm not an expert on the Osgood area.
The more we are consistent with, you know, especially for the whole population, I think that's, I think that's great, and I I don't know where to fit this in, I hope somebody else was, I'm with the select board liaison also, so last night, I think they're digging up your front yard out here.
Yeah.
Okay, did you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great. So they're fixing the sewer finally.
Did they, did they let you know what's gonna happen, or did you find out when you got here?
I found out when I got here.
Okay, I'm working on it.
It's okay. I'm glad it's, I'm glad they gave it done.
I'm glad it's done before the school.
Yeah, before school.
They, they should have told you, you also have some parking limitations out there.
Well, it's not, right now, it's not a problem, but.
Okay, it will be tomorrow, so, I think trucks and everything are coming tomorrow.
Do we know how long that, that's gonna last?
Is Cohasset raccoirware, because that's where the, um, raccoir stream meets, and they have a bus coming through tomorrow.
That's gotta lie. We have our ice cream social.
Yeah, I, I think it's on your side, over, wherever the sewer, there's been a blocked sewer.
Yes, that's in front of the Otter's Twin.
Okay, so they're fixing the pipe all the way.
Yes, it does go all the way down across the high school.
I was surprised to hear it myself last night, so I asked about it, and I said, did anybody let anybody know? And I got kind of a blank stare.
On, uh, Pond Street, so I assumed it was something unrelated to school.
I didn't know.
Well, they call it the school sewer problem.
You can see it.
It is a problem.
So, is that what the tape thing is on?
Yeah, you can see all the cones, it's all along the top of the field.
Okay, so.
Yeah, because there's always a, a, a.
So they, they have a hard, the contract has a hard stop, the contractor was awarded the contract like days ago, it was to start today. Uh, and they said he will be done in two weeks. So, days before school starts.
Yeah, we can talk later, I just, I'm, I'm concerned with the disruption in the amount of, um, like, is there gonna be a big hole?
I think that there is, I think, your side faculty and everybody coming, they alluded to the fact they would need to park somewhere else.
Yeah.
The next two weeks.
Yeah, we won't be able to accept, like, up the driveway and go around to our side.
Yeah.
That also is gonna affect any sort of deliveries for food.
Yeah.
To the cafeteria.
So, Mr. Carm, glad you brought that up.
I didn't know where to fit it in, so.
Um, any construction project that impacts, uh, this district property a couple of weeks before we start school, would best to be, uh, it would be best procedure to run it by the superintendent of schools and/or school committee, so we could then run it by the superintendent of schools, because otherwise it could adversely impact school operations. So glad that you identified that issue.
I was surprised to hear it myself, a very nice fellow named Brian Joyce is, uh, at the town hall and is managing the project.
Yep.
So you can, so you want, I'll end, I'm surprised they, they didn't call already. But, uh, well, the sewer will work better for you. They use John's name, it's like, you know that, John, he's at, we never worked at the sewer, but, uh, Principal Mills is the first one to come out and say, hey, we got.
It's a little stinky.
I am concerned about the.
Yeah, no, it was a problem.
So, sorry to be the bearer of bad news.
That's fine, there's also a, well, um, could we have it on alumni field?
I don't know, I don't know what the, I don't know what the script of the project.
I, I think that that probably won't work well.
Maybe one of the elements.
And this is why it's helpful if people let you know if they're going to be digging up district property. I mean, we're thankful that the problem's being rectified, sure, because it was a bad situation. But, it's just, the communication is troubling, because that is gonna impact a district-wide event, welcome back to school event, because there's, there's no, that, that's for sure. I would imagine that that's gonna be, first of all, it's gonna be a hazard if there's a hole, and there's young children running around, because remember that the ice cream trucks park up top? It's, it's, it's going to be, my, I imagine, there's gonna be some asphalt tear or earth torn up at the edge of that parking lot in front of Principal Mills's school, and that's where the ice cream trucks were, that's true.
That's where it's torn up, there's cones there now.
Right.
Yeah, it's parallel to the, uh, telephone pole fences. So, so I tell them not to know, so I will have to call in the morning and get some information and maybe do a total retraction on the ice cream social.
Well.
It's unfortunate.
I'm going to, uh, contact someone tonight about it, and then I'll be in contact with you afterwards. We'll figure it out, we will, we'll figure it out, we'll figure it out, but, thanks for bringing that up. Uh, any other questions for Principal Mills?
I get credit for actually sitting through the select board.
Yes, yes, you do.
Right, any, any questions for Principal Mills about the handbook?
Yeah, I guess, um, just a notation, like, that's a great idea. Families coming in late, because we were fitting, it was ten minutes earlier, and, uh, to, to bring him in early, and, almost like, because especially if you live in Cohasset, you gotta, you always think you can get to Hanover in twenty minutes, but it's always thirty minutes, you should know this, Ron, it's always thirty minutes. So to leave, you know, leave your house ten minutes early to get the kids to do that, I think it's fantastic, it's a great idea. Um, some of the things that I, when my kids have been socialized about is, um, the, uh, as far as like, why they can get, uh, excused from school, a lot of children are talking about like having a wellness day or a mental health day, um, so I was thinking like, could we like possibly look into that idea of like, because you don't wanna, look, if a kid needs a day off from school and he's stressed out, or she's stressed out, I think, I don't think they should say, hey, I'm sick, I think they should say, I'm stressed out, I need a day off. I mean, we're able to do that as adults. I was just saying, like, as a gesture, would we consider something like that to make it like a wellness day?
I can speak to the high school. I mean, we've had conversations with some of the, uh, student leaders at Safe Harbor, and, you know, they, they brought up.
That's probably where I got it.
Yeah, probably.
My kids.
No, it was kind of spearheading.
Yeah, 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 okay, I was wondering where I heard that.
You know, yeah, conceptually, I, I, I understand where they're coming from. I do think that there are days where it's very difficult to get to school, but what I'm more concerned about is the underlying reasons as to why. Are you not coming to school because you didn't study for the test and you're stressed out? Are you not coming to school because um, of some other kind of anxiety, and I would rather work through that, rather than just have the student saying, take the day off. Because I don't know how to vet that just with an email that says, I need the day. Because I, I don't know that I agree that you can do that as adults.
Yeah, I, I would also say too, that, uh, with the, there are, uh, accepted, uh, like, a school committee policy on reasons to have an absence excused, but into the system, I built a certain number of days before, like, when we get to five days, we send a letter, and in ten days, it's a meet-in. So it's sort of built into the system, uh, is the fact that, you know, kids are gonna have off days or days where they're under the weather, you know, it's not like they're not allowed any absent days, so.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't specify that, if you're gonna read it.
Right, right.
And it kind of, um, I don't know, you gotta make an excuse of, you gotta say you're sick, and you're not, you might just just need a day off, I mean, to be honest with you. You know, I, I'm, like, sometimes, because I work for myself, I just say, I need a day off, you know, it's you know, there might be a situation at school that you don't feel comfortable with, and you don't want to really get into it, you know, I, I think that they should have that alternative, that we, I, I think, you know, we should just so.
They don't have to lie, I mean, if, if they just say that they're sick, there's not a doctor's note that a company's.
No, they can, remember, there's a certain amount of days they can do that, and a family can make that determination without having it impact the high school credits. Um, we always want to try to advocate for helping kids so they can come to school, but, um, I guess the question is, uh, do we create that as an excused absence? But I guess the question is, do we create that as an excused absence? Or is that just one of the absences that we know students can have?
Yeah. Well, thank you, Dr., thank you, Principal Scott, because I, I think that that would be a conversation in the student council. Just going up there and see, see what the kids think, you know, see if they can come up with something that is, is reasonable to the fact that, yeah, I just don't want to go to school today. I recognize that as well. Because I think there was a Saturday Night Live that Johnny didn't want to go to school one day. I don't know if anybody remembers it, but it was pretty fun. And Mr. Bull ran, oh, you don't want to go to school today? I don't want to go to work today. Skid on him.
But we, but you're right on, you're hitting it on the money with the, you know, the need to be attentive to student wellness needs. And to have those discussions with students. That's, we've been talking a lot about the importance of student voice this upcoming year. So that, that certainly rings true for this. It's just a matter of, I, I think, I think you're right on when you say there's under, if there's an underlying problem, we want to work that through with them. We certainly want to advocate for students coming to school because that's, you, you can't teach a student who's not in school. And, you know, we, we hope that if there's a student that requires multiple excuses for absences, that maybe a doctor would be involved. But, you know, certainly, this is all very good conversation because what it leads to is our work with wellness and aid to mental health. Which is so important.
Maybe we can talk about that too.
Right on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, Principal Mills?
Sure. This, on page 47 of your co-curricular participation, it says, is marked with an unexcused absence. What happens if the absence is excused? For example, a child misses from, say, nine to two for a funeral, comes back and wants to go to practice. Is that?
See, this is a middle school where most of our extracurriculars are clubs. We do have a cross-country team. It's, it's a club, you know, we're, we're like a voluntary, voluntary association of other middle schools. So we don't have like MSA rules and things like that. So if, if a child, you know, did have to go to funeral and a family reached out and they wanted to go to drama practice afterwards, we look at that as being part of, like I said, for the whole child. And that's why we put down an unexcused absence. Is a reason to miss one of those, like stay home, get better. But if there is something that, you know, our, our kids can't control things like that because of their age, they're 10, 15. Yeah, we would, you know, understand and make a plan for this.
Yeah, I just didn't know parents, you know, could potentially, if that was a sort of opening for a parent pushback. It's really well, like, why I'm asking, sort of, if protection of the community for you, whether or not that, that sort of term of excused absence, whether it's just absences in general prohibit participation or whether it's the excused or unexcused, that's the, the decision point.
It happens all the time at high school. You know, people just call, work out, make sure.
Yeah, and we didn't have the offerings, you know, until recently, to even have this be an issue. So this year, when we did talk to families about the fact that it might not be, it's not appropriate for a child who is home all day sick to come in and practice, play. You know, we're having those conversations about what's reasonable because at that point, there wasn't even anything in the handbook. So this is sort of a first go-around, but you're right. If we might end up having to spar over excuse versus unexcused. And then I think next year, probably the same, usually we'll be listening in.
Experience will inform the language.
You know, the parents and I, like, in the administration, we have that same, we have a common interest. And that's doing the best for the child.
Anyone else? I just want to say, Principal Mills, as, so, I mean, they all are, but middle school in particular, I think, comes as a very unique developmental sort of grouping. And the handbook that you have and the changes just underscore your, like, sensitivity and awareness of that in, in everything you do. And that's what makes you such a strong middle school principal. And we're really lucky to have you. But I, I love the, the cell phones changes because for many families, not all, it's a family-specific determination. But for many families, this is the, the, the age range in which kids would start to get their own phones. And so it's, it's a great, I love it when you look at it in tandem. I was just doing this because you had changes, you look at it in tandem with Principal Scott's handbook section on it. And you see the additional independence that are, that are given to them as they get more comfortable with devices and the way that it's, you know, it's much simpler in, in Principal Scott's handbook. You know, this is what you can do, this is what you can use them, but you can use them because it's like you're older and you can do that. And yours is more like, can't do it, you know? We know you have them, we know you're there, but, you know, it's not for school, basically. They're still much younger. But I just, it just, it just, it's reflective of, of, I think, your sensitivity to that overall developmental bracket that you're in charge of. And it's a huge strength of yours. And it's, it's, it's just, it's, it's very, very, it's palpable in everything you do.
It's the whole team now. It's really, the administrative team and the council is fantastic. They had a great school council.
And that's, I appreciate you saying every time I say something like that, which is indicative of a good leader too. Thank you very much, Principal Mills. We really appreciate you. We appreciate all of you.
All right. Short, short version. We did a lot of work in the influence last year to really kind of align on, Principal Mills and I sat down and Mr. Lawrence did a lot of the work to make sure that some of the changes that he had, the bulk of them, we mirrored so that the, you know, procedurally, we're, we're on the same page. So there were really only a couple of substantive changes that we made. We removed Saturday school as a detention option. We haven't used it in years. It used to be used when I was here, but I think we're in a, we're in a day where it doesn't make sense for a faculty member or a student to be alone on Saturday for three hours. Yeah, no breakfast. Mr. Lawrence did, and I agree, add some consequences for unexcused dismissals to align with the tardies. What we were seeing was an inordinate amount of lunch dismissals, skipping a test last period. There were some, you know, siblings would call in and say, you know, so-and-so's got a dentist appointment, they get picked up in the parking lot and see and drive away. And, you know, there are legitimate reasons for dismissals too, but I think, I, I think it's become a little bit more commonplace where, you know, like this, and again, it speaks to your point about, about, you know, the student wellness. Someone will text a parent and say, you know, I, I want to leave. Let's work with the adjustment counselors and work with the assistant principal and try to figure out, you know, what the root cause of that is. See if we can work through it, you know, come up with some supports. We added language around restorative justice in alignment with the new 37 eight and three-quarters law. And we added language around artificial intelligence just as a form of teaching.
Any questions for Principal Scott? Ask it, Will.
I'll just kind of, I'm super excited to see sort of across the board in these handbooks, glimmers of restorative justice being used as a method for your management. I think that's a really sort of where, where things are at right now. I think it's a wonderful way to, to work with children around really the damages that they're doing when they make poor choices versus some more traditional consequences.
Yeah, I think we've always tried that approach. I mean, it, it depends on what the infraction is, it's how much you can really just say you're sorry and make it go away. But, you know, I, I do think it's much more explicit now and I think that's a good thing.
Sure. Okay. Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry.
One more weird thing. Sorry. So there is, I hope somebody else saw, there's a news thing that either happened on a Friday night or a Sunday. Mass teachers is supporting a ballot initiative to remove MCAS.
Yes, the regulation requirement.
Okay.
Yeah, not remove MCAS necessarily, but it's a regulation requirement.
Okay. I, it caught me off guard. I didn't, I had, we should maybe a future item, we should talk about that?
Sure, we can, sure. Let's, let's mark that down as a future item.
I found it odd because it's like a Friday night or a Sunday. It's always takes those are the days you don't have good news, you put stuff out.
It's when the commissioner makes his announcements too.
And, and, you know, it's like, they can't be talking about Massachusetts and then there's the head of mass teachers saying, good idea.
They've been pushing for a long time not to have MCAS.
Okay, good. I'm glad somebody's, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I welcome that discussion. Those are good, those are discussions that could be important for us.
Yeah, there's others that are, they're doing, some other.
Yeah.
There's some programs around doing different.
Okay, great.
There you go.
One last suggestion. Since we all have to sit here and go through this, how do we get the parents to really go through?
People only read the handbook when they get drunk.
I'm a big, I'm a big prevention guy. I, I just think that we can prevent a lot of things by actually reading. Is there any kind of incentive to read it for anybody other than it's a good idea? I mean, can we send it out individually? Can we send it, do we, do we as a district send it out individually? And if we could, could we, you know, emphasize, please read this? Because I think it would save the district a lot of heads.
They sign up for them every year.
People sign off.
They sign off, but.
Doesn't mean they read it.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we should get a witness. It's like, maybe it can come from maybe.
I think blurbs in my newsletter, so I think we all do. Like, oh, this month I'm gonna highlight the zipper. This month I'm gonna highlight, you know, the way for the day. And it just kind of, as things bubble up, but like you said, it's, it's.
I'm wondering if we could put it in somehow, work it into whether it's a prize or a drawing or whatever. But during our open houses, even just, please make sure, yeah, or just a big sign, keep making sure you read them.
Yeah, because I think it's, it just, I mean, you guys must have to refer it that whole time. Like, oh, go to the rules.
Yeah, we go, we go through it with all of our class meetings at the beginning of the year. So we highlight specific things, you know, especially around attendance and some discipline. We could easily just push out those PowerPoints to parents.
Yeah. Like I said, prevention's key. Even, even some of the things that I'm starting to see with some of the sporting events that, where, where we go, you know, our kids getting involved with other parents and I think a lot of that stuff can be like, again, prevention. Did you know that you can't yell at a, at a game to another? Like, what, what does, what does it mean to be a Cohasset skipper? And what does it mean to be polite when you, when you're at a girls' basketball game, you're not screaming like a crazy person? Like, it's just, you know, and, 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 and I've seen it, like, not in our school district, but really bad stuff being said to girls. And, and, and I didn't like it and we addressed it, but it, it's something, I don't want to see our kids do that. I don't want to see our kids not know that it's not okay to razz the other team or, and just, just, you know, be a step above. And I think that education's the way to get there. So the more we can kind of educate that, that what this is, so.
One thing I can do from my level is, in my newsletter, I always have a newsletter that updates safety. And it talks about bullying prevention. It, it really lays out all the way, all the regulations. It, it, this would be a perfect time for that, where I could highlight areas of the handbooks that we want people to really focus on. Because it's a lot. I mean, there's, there's a lot there and there's a reason for it, right? But, and it is sometimes so someone can look up.
Right. Well, just to at least this point, I mean, you have that new check-in system now. It was good, so, like, where am I gonna learn about it?
But it, but it really can be the new and also the really important elements. So it can help people, it can focus their attention a little bit on certain areas of the handbook that would be really paramount for them to know. We can do that.
Anything else for Principal Scott? Okay, well, before the four of you go, I just want to recognize all of your efforts on behalf of the school committee. And, you know, while many people are on summer vacation in the education realm, our principals are working hard for many hours over the summer to ensure that the buildings are run properly and are ready to go. And everyone, all the students hit the ground running on day one. And you each are, as I already pointed out, as Principal Mills is, a master of your own age, you know, development bracket that you're in. And, you know, every single student that's in your school, I've seen each one of you interact with the students. You know them all by name and their situations and any sort of special needs or concerns. And we are very, very appreciative of all of you. We, we appreciate you. Thank you for everything you do for the children in our district.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Yeah, we should go. You're the representative.
Yes, yes.
You can take the brunt of it, so no.
Maybe it's Principal Scott's motion. Is there a motion to approve all four handbooks as presented by our principals at today's meeting with the addition of the proposed revision made by Ms. Leskey? Is there a motion to that effect? The motion is made by Mr. Carr. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Leskey. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The handbooks are approved with that additional change. Thank you all.
Awesome. Thank you. Have a, have a nice night. Thank you.
All right, moving on. School updates. We're beating back over to our superintendent of schools, Dr. Patrick Sullivan.
And actually, we sprinkled, we sprinkled in quite a few updates through, with the handbook. I did want to mention a few major projects that are happening that are, that are important. As you mentioned with Principal Farrell, the Ausgood vestibule is in full construction right now. And it's, it's gonna be an appropriate looking and functioning vestibule, which was pointed out to us as something that we should really update to be up to state-of-the-art security and safety measures. And also to make it, quite frankly, the same as the other schools. So you'll be able to have a face-to-face interaction with an individual in a vestibule that has shatterproof and appropriately protective glass. And it, it just, it, it, it gives us another layer of security where we can have a face-to-face interaction with someone while they're putting in their information to show that they should be in the schools before we press a button or let somebody in, as opposed to doing that in, in a place where we aren't able to have a face-to-face reaction and then hoping that, you know, indeed, there's no issue with that person. So it's a much safer scenario. Not to mention, it's a, it's a safe transaction situation where you can come in and drop something off and not actually enter the school building. There's a lot of reasons for it. And I'm thrilled that that's gonna be ready and thankful for the town and supporting it. And also for the school committee for advocating for it because it was important.
Yeah, I definitely recognize the focus that we're taking. I think that's wonderful. I mean, got together and got it done it pretty quickly when you think about it. I mean, this is.
It's, yeah, it was tough to get going. Once we get it going, they're, they're.
It's good to see. It's good to see progress.
And that'll be ready. So we're good with that. Secondly, Principal Sullivan mentioned the Deer Hill, the Susan McEnara Innovation Commons. And that's going to be wonderful. And that, that is, you know, something that won't be totally ready by the start of school, but within a month it will be. And that's gonna be a real showpiece for many generations of kids coming through Deer Hill. So it's really a fitting setup now for what I think is one of the best spaces in the district in terms of the, the way it's set out, the windows, the natural light, and that area is beautiful. At the middle and high school project that may not be recognized as much is the, the upper calf, which is referred to as the senior calf, is, is having brand-new furniture there that'll be appropriate. And they have a lower lobby area, which is also going to be a much more collaborative learning space because of the furniture that's being put in there. And then they also are in big need of an upgrade to the faculty room and we're working hard to try to make that happen as well. So those three.
And then the, the device that's going in at the middle school?
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah, so this is part of our, our plan to make sure that our technology is updated. So the, the middle school will be getting interactive. Well, they'll be getting boards like this. So those will be in all the classrooms. So.
Cool. That's part of the technology plan.
And so if they won't go in all at once, that would be impossible. But they'll be, they'll be brought in and installed over the course of the year, so.
And then, of course, the, the great work, and thank you, Mr. Kearney, for your work on this. But the fitness center, which went from, I would say, one of the, the oldest, and I'm gonna use the word worst, but a facility that needed a lot of work to being really up there with some of the best workout rooms in, on the South Shore. And that's according to the person who did all kinds of work on this and works at a lot of the, the different, the different districts to update their, their exercise areas. So it, it's a, it's a very nice exercise area. And it's gonna be beneficial not only to students working out there after school and before school, but for our classes, our phys ed classes and health classes.
Teachers and police officers and.
Absolutely. And it's, you know, like anything in, in schools, these are community resources. And that's, that's, that's great. So that, that's, so these are, you know, there's, there's a lot going on where we're trying to hone in academically. But facility-wise, we'll stand, see some, some major upgrades with the new track and turf and what we're. and what we're mentioning now, there's some really good things happening.
You know, the, you mentioned the senior campus. Can it give us more space to have more tables?
Yeah, getting high tables, some high tables.
Yeah, but I'm going to say we now, like, as opposed to having, I mean, you see my son and all his friends are like, I can't believe they can put so many kids on one table.
Yeah, to be able to spread out more.
It's gonna, that's my point.
Although they do like to do.
Yeah, but I do think they'd like to sit next to each other.
They just.
They do, which is, which is really kind of cool.
Yeah.
But I don't know if that's going to change it. That might be empty table and they're still like that. And but that did cost me, like, I think I mentioned it, that somebody had left their pack because they don't use lockers, so they stepped on Jack's computer and that cost me quite a buck. So like, if we can spread out the, at least the gym bags or something, you know, because they all carry everything and that's still something we have to like.
Think about.
We have to figure that out because like the kids are trained to go to the high school that they don't get a locker, which is insane because it's like, you're supposed to get a locker, but it's been, it's been like, if you, if you have a locker, you're crazy, you know? And and I think that's, we gotta, we gotta kind of make that like, it's okay to have a locker, you know? Because I think that's still insanity that our kids.
Make sure we have working with eighty-pound bags. Non-functional lockers too.
Yeah, so.
Mr. Kearney, thank you for that business. From my, in my opinion, it wouldn't have happened without you, especially with the celebrity with which it was accomplished. And thank you. That was a big win to the district.
Certainly, but I do also want to recognize that the custodians and Steve Attandi and Sue, Dr. Sullivan. And it was, it was a, it was a collaborative. I just think that it's going to help so many kids now because if you don't make a team, now you have the opportunity to learn.
It looks great.
Yeah, and you, you mentioned technology. On one of the, on a couple of the machines, you hit a cue code and they'll give you a hundred and fifty different.
Yes, it will. Yeah, there's a workout. For that particular.
That particular, yeah.
House.
Really? Yeah, it's like, because there's so many things on there that you can do ladder, you can do a lot of, um, curls.
And just scan it a hundred and forty-four.
Yeah. It keep going on and on and on. But also too, as you want to mention the fact that now we also asked that stipend for a teacher that's going to be able to, so Tuesdays and Thursdays, I think it is, for two hours, three to five and three to six.
I'll have to check, but it's.
Yeah. It's in that. So basically, if you have a child that that needs to learn physical education, this is a good time to do that.
And it's safe and they'll be trained and using the equipment. They, and they, you know, we already have the person who's doing it is trained. So it's, it's a safe.
Right.
Atmosphere.
Right, right. And I think that's so important too, because again, not every, every kid makes the team. And, you know, that's a good way to make the teams, you know, be able to put yourself on a program, especially like the middle, high school kids, because they're growing every time. So if you're actually writing down your growth, right? I mean, you're, because you can measure yourself out and you'd know if you're gaining weight, losing weight, you know? Because some kids, you know, want to gain weight, some kids want to lose weight. So it's a good way to get them going. So really excited about that. Real excited to work with Craig and with the, with the food. I'm going to hit that running again this year. I think we made a lot of good progress. I do want to give a shout out to the governor of, for her working with the state legislators to get food funded, another two hundred and fifty-one million dollars for the school kids of Massachusetts. Just want to say that really helps us as, as Ted, with the finances, the facilities and financing. I mean, to have kids getting, especially kids with the food deserts. We're not one. I think that we've, I'd like to see us work a little next year with the after-school program food vending machine, get a little healthier.
Mr. Kearney, I kind of usurped Dr. Sullivan's school updates just because I wanted to thank you. So I just want to give it back.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't want to take over.
We'll have the other parts of the.
That's exciting. I just want to get it all out there. So go ahead.
It's like kicking off the cobwebs for me, getting everybody for the year. So that's good. It's all good to hear. But thank you. And I I did want to update on the ice cream social, although I have to, embarrassingly made a couple errors in the the flyers, but I hopefully people, I just, I had them on, like, so I corrected that. And right now, the plan is for Tuesday, August fifteenth, is from five thirty to six thirty in the Cohasset Middle School front area, front field. But of course, we'll stay tuned to that. Does sound like it's, it would be, potentially it could be impacted and we'll make adjustments as we need to. But anyway, that's exciting. And this is, this is a nice event because it's really just, we're such a nice, close-knit community and this is really kind of giving to the community and just saying how much we care about everybody. We're, we're all one and it's a good time for us to choose the leadership team a little bit. But we'll have activities run by our, our, some of our honor society students who are volunteering and doing some great work to, to set up games for the younger kids. And then, of course, Principal Farrell came up with the teddy bear picnic, so that will be there. And it should be a nice event.
Yeah.
So excited about that. And then we also have, as I, as I mentioned in my letter, let me see here. We do have a, the teddy bear picnic, which now you can see there too is. This is what it is. Invite you to bring your teddy bear or favorite stuffy for a checkup with Dr. James Farrell and have some fun. Please bring a blanket and a picnic dinner and then join us at the district ice cream social for more fun. So it's, it's, it should be a really nice event. And then we also have the superintendent's coffee. So superintendent's coffee is right before our September sixth school committee meeting. It'll be right in this facility. And we look forward to the conversation. We decided this year, we had one before school started last year and it wasn't so well-attended and it was more that there, it's, we thought it would be nice to have it like a weekend.
Yeah.
Then to get people who can actually give us some input that might help us direct some things. And, you know, sometimes we think things are going smoothly in a particular area and a parent will say something and we'll realize that, geez, we didn't realize that that was having that effect. So we figured this would be a better time for it.
Maybe they'll stay for the school committee meeting too.
I mean, I still, right? And it's a good, that's a good time to do it.
We've been talking about doing that, setting up different times to revolve around the school committee meeting. So to Craig's point, that might be a good idea.
Yeah, it'll be. So and we'll keep you updated on if if I do have to make adjustments to the ice cream social. It's nothing new.
I'll figure it out. I think it'll be easy to move it to a little more field when you need to.
Well, I have, yeah, I have to know where the parking would be because one of the keys to having it here was that we had that parking lot because other than that, we don't really have the space at Deer Hill and Ozgood to.
Move the student lot still, because you just move it to the field, like people just park in the student lot.
What will the student lot be?
Yes, available. Down in the middle.
Available, so it's just a matter of looking at what, you know, what teams, do any teams have a field at that time? You know, so.
Right, I think.
But it's the top of the field and I'm worried because that's where the ice cream trucks were parked. And if there's a big trench there, I I would rather not have elementary school aged kids.
We could use the loop though. We could use the loop and then the.
Could.
Well, we, I mean, it's also a way of showing off our nice new field too. So like, we, we, we'll make it work.
Yeah, we'll figure it out. I, 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 I'm already in contact with the town. We'll get details tomorrow.
We'll, we'll make it work. Yep, I'm not, and I'm sure the town was looking, it was an opportunity to happen.
For sure, and we wanted it fixed, so it's.
We need it fixed. But I get that, but I wish I just hadn't sent out my massive message of that. What happens, right? So that's really the updates I wanted to to bring to your attention.
All right, the twenty-three, twenty-four hiring update?
Oh, the hiring update. And then, did you have an academic that's next, right?
Yes, just.
All right, so let me, let me bring the hiring update up. So we're doing very well with our hiring and, you know, some, some new positions. We had a little bit more turnover this year than we've had in the past. Some retirements, some, not anything comparative to other districts that I see. And actually, we've had no trouble filling them.
No, I'm getting emails from other assistant superiors. We have this, we have a listserv and they're just, just dropping in positions that they're trying to fill.
I mean, we, and we got the cream of the crop here. The teachers have been amazing. You can see the ones that we still have to hire, some ESPs, some of them are recent departures. And we have a tech support technician that Mr. Menar will hire. We do have, we did recently receive a long, a leave of absence. So we're hiring a long-term sub for a teacher on leave of absence that's recent at the high school. So these things come up. So we're in the hunt for a high school science teacher. And then we do have that elementary special education teacher. And we're struggling a bit with the point-five trainer to be able to hire that person that you have, that you allowed us to. That's tough. Yeah, it's, it's a, what I'm, what I'm learning from talking to Steve is that is a need. I mean, everybody had the same need that we did, you know? They had MIA needs the trainer to be with the football team and we need a trainer available for all our teams. And so it it's a high, it's a high-demand position. So we're thinking about what to do with that. But we're, we're sitting in a good spot right now. I feel good. There's a couple of, of big hires here we need to, we need to fill the.
Custodian as well.
We, yeah, the custodian is, that's a, that's an existing custodian. That's not, that's not the new position.
Oh, okay. I know we did authorize that other.
And but we didn't, that new, yeah, we have another special education.
We just got that.
Yeah, that's not on this.
Okay, well, you'll keep it posted. There it is.
Yeah, the big, the big, the big two, the three big hires are two special education positions and a, a science teacher. The others that, you know, are sort of, we, I think we'll fill them, but everyone's important. I'm not trying to make that point. I'm just saying that those are, those sometimes are harder to fill.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Moving on to teaching and learning and academic updates, Dr. Leslie Collins, our assistant superintendent of schools. Do you have any update there?
I do, do you want to?
Yeah.
This will be just a really quick overview of some of the big things. There's lots of things happening, but these are some of the bigger initiatives that we all have happening around just academic pieces. So for elementary in literacy, we'll be continuing our work in this workshop. Ozgood will be in year one. We piloted it last year, but all staff will be participating. And Deer Hill will be in year two. And we've already coordinated with Teaching Learning Alliance, the professional development consultants we've been working with. So I have some really solid PD, including full-day workshops on our full days with teachers. So we're excited about that, including even having some new teacher trainings because obviously we need to catch people up. Hegarty will be in year two. That is that phonemic awareness program. I should have written that in there. That'll be year two. And then iReady personalized learning will be replacing Lexia, which is what we've used in the past. But we felt that moving to the iReady made sense because that's a diagnosis. And so that will be happening. And in math, we will be adding also the iReady personalized learning. That will be replacing Dreambox. Ozgood will be in year one. Deer Hill actually piloted it last year and so they'll be in year two. And then social studies, we are working with actually Desi. Desi has come out with investigating history for grades five, six and seven. And so we wrote a grant with Situate and Hingham. So we will be working with them, Situate this year, Hingham next year. The thought is that the grant will also be available for us the following year. And we'll be collaborating, which is really nice, in particular for a district like ours where we're so small, that they'll be working with, with two different towns. So next year with Situate and in our middle school in particular, because there's only one teacher per grade. And so they'll, let's see that one, one of the next slides.
And we'll talk a little more about that with families too.
We will, so I'll be doing some work with that. And middle school has a lot happening. They will be implementing a new math program and that is illustrative math. And they actually will have training next week for three days. So the teachers will be coming in for that. And I just kind of put the number, financial support we got. That was a little, the grant was a little bit less than what I had asked for. What the state decided to do was divvy up the money because so many people applied for it rather than giving people their full amount. I'll take anything that they give us. And then history, again, there's that grant. We received twenty-six thousand nine hundred dollars for that. And that's six and seven. And science, we are continuing our Open SciEd, will be in year two for that. But we also will have a new teacher in sixth grade. So a little bit of the beginning for some and we received a great grant for sixty-two thousand six hundred dollars. The hope is to be with the, sorry, I'm hoping the version number, I think it might be twenty-six thousand. I think I may have reversed it. The science, I think it was twenty-six thousand, not sixty-two thousand. But we'll be hopefully in, working with BC. They have a program and in the past, we have not been able to even apply for the grant because we did not fall into the criteria around our economics. So the fact that we were given money and we were able to participate in that is really big. And then the high school, they're really going to focus on their report and creating an action plan based on the recommendations made by the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. And yes, they had their study last year. And so there'll be a lot of work related to that. And then finally, we have the addition of a new preschool classroom. So we'll be looking at the current curriculum and collaborating to look at that curriculum and we'll be working with professional development consultants to do that, hoping maybe to partner with a couple of other towns also. Again, because we're so small, it would be really nice for us to have some, some other work. We also received a grant from Metco, Restore Justice. Actually, there are only five or six of us that got the grant, which was really amazing. This really, it is happening at the middle and high school, but we really want to get teachers trained. And we use responsive classroom at the elementary level, which is also, we're starting justice practices. And so it's a nice way of aligning what we're doing in our practices. And so this will allow us to get teachers trained. We're going to start out small and and grow it as over time. But there are some teachers that really, really want to do this and Tara Noyce and Kate Salas have been instrumental in helping me with this. And they'll really be, yeah, they'll really be the leads on, on this with Elisa and obviously Elisa against Carl.
And they're the two assistant, assistant principals of the middle.
Exactly. So I'm really excited about that. And then we'll have a new website. We have a new provider. We will be working that migration. It probably won't be ready till after the first of the year. And I'm pulling a team together with that. And then I forgot to add that we're doing our curriculum review process for health and wellness. So we'll be in phase, in our phase one, which is self-study. So I'm really excited about that. Tor and Sweeney, the department chair, yesterday talked a little bit about it.
And you can see one of, from many roles is securing these grants. It takes a lot of work.
Does.
And it really helps the district, so thank you.
Yeah, we got, actually, we applied. There was only one grant we didn't get, but I was pretty happy with that, so.
Sure. Thank you so much, Dr. Collins. Any questions for Dr. Collins relative to her academic update?
Quick question. Are you maintaining some licenses of Lexia for kids with SLDs and? So that will, yeah, originally Lexia was really just used for, they had licenses for students who need in special education. So that will still exist, but that's a great question.
Any others?
I just have a comment. I just want to echo what you said about Dr. Collins and these grants. You do a wonderful job and I, since I've been here, I'm always bringing up grants. And for my wellness grant, to put the wellness committee together, it's like, every time I had grants.
And they're free money.
Yeah, I know, and I think the district should really understand and I'm glad you pointed it out because someone who's been sitting at this chair for five, five years and saw all the work that you do, I just wanted to say.
Tremendous amount of work.
Yeah, and the results are awesome, so it's nice to bring.
We're going to flip my number here so I.
It is. I got excited for a second.
Dr. Collins, relative to the elementary literacy of, I have two questions. One is, we are still going to expect an update, like, looking back on the initial year of that rollout and how it went and what our evaluation of that is and whether we need to make any adjustments. That's going to be towards the beginning of the academic year, right? Sometime?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. And then the issue that Miss Leskey was just asking about with the replacement of Lexia. I can't remember, had we noted that before today publicly?
I did talk about how we were moving to the personalized learning from iReady last year.
Okay.
Because we were, we had piloted and so we decided to, so I did talk about it. I'm not sure that we let families know that we're moving away from it.
Okay.
It was being underutilized.
All right. I just would, and this is, this isn't, this is just my individual member input because, as you recall, there was, there was Because as you recall, there was, there was there was some, some apprehension about the way in which we rolled out the literacy shift, which I do personally view as a failure in the way we did that. And I say we, I mean, we, I mean, this was something that we should have, I think, used sort of like a multi-phase approach to. I know this is just a one smaller element of it, and it was something that we were talking about iReady. That was certainly no secret that we were using that and piloting that. But when we, I, I just, I think that the district families are especially sensitive to major curricular areas like literacy or math and any changes within the curriculum. Can we try to be cognizant of that moving forward? Especially sensitive, I should say, instead of cognizant, because you're always cognizant of that. But especially sensitive to that, any changes, and so that we're, we're able to sort of give an advanced notice to our families so that if they want to weigh in about this or ask questions about why we did it or what other programs we, or possibilities or candidates we looked at.
Sure.
I would appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think one of the things about iReady, I totally appreciate that, is that iReady is something that Dessie does recommend. That was the other piece to this. It's one of the programs that they give high recommendations to, so it makes sense to move to that. But I think it's important for families to know why we did it and that we've made, so.
Right, and before we made the decision, you know, like the decision's made, now we're doing it. So to say that and say these are the, so these are facts we considered, these are the other alternatives we looked at, and this is why. This is a problem that I I see frequently in any sort of like, you know, governing body. So I'm just, I, and I know, we know, all of us know, sitting here, how sensitive our community is to literacy shifts or curriculum shifts, literacy curriculum shifts. So I just, I don't know, it just, I was like, you know, because I view that as one of the major failures of the committee when we did that, when we made that shift. That was, people were alarmed by that, and that was a bad, that we did not rule that out properly. So, but we are absolutely adhering to and committing to consistent and 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 ongoing monitoring of that. And that will be reflected in this presentation I talked to. But anyway, not to belabor the point, just wanted to throw it out there.
Good point.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Collins. And I echo Mr. Kearney's comments. Thank you for everything you do. We're really lucky to have you, and we appreciate you. Moving on to budget resource and governance, we have appointment finally of new school facilities, school committee nominees for the school facilities committee. This is to replace Mr. Kearney and I on that committee because Ms. Leskey also was on it, but it was also some, so that would have created a problem from an open meeting perspective. But also, there were some concern about the nominating committee having two of its serving members as its nominees. It was done sort of as an emergency measure when, when the, when the school facilities committee was first formed because there wasn't an abundance of interest there. So we're trying to populate it and get it meetings. But now it's been rolling, and I think there was some other interest. So we found two other very qualified candidates that were willing to do that. Their names are Melissa McDonough and Jen Boylan, both district parents, both very involved. And they have expressed an interest in doing this and speaking on that level, which we welcome. So I'm asking for a motion to appoint Ms. Boylan and Ms. McDonough as the two, there's, we already have one, that we have a long-term, three-year member who, Kathleen Burns, who's already on the committee. So we just need to replace Mr. Kearney and I with these two nominees.
I would, I would just ask, is there any way we can put this on the agenda so that we can meet the two candidates? Because like, honestly, I'd like to see what kind of, I'd like to bring up some points to them. Like, can we meet them and have them come in here before we just appoint them?
We can certainly meet them. I, there's, there's, so I'm just going to express to you that I would like to do this tonight in terms of appointing them, Mr. Kearney, because A, there, there aren't any, there, there, there's only one other person that's interested in doing it. And I believe that she's going to be a new select board nominee. So there's a limited amount of people that are willing to do this. And the school facilities committee needs to have this done so that they can get forms and they can start meeting again. That this has been sort of impeding their progress. So, and I feel like I've already delayed this, and that this is sort of something I took on for them. So I want to, I don't, I mean, they're, they're eminently qualified to do this. They, they're, they're, they're district parents. So I, I absolutely think it's a great idea to have them come in.
Yeah.
So we can just talk.
I, 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 listen.
And I think ideally, you're right, Mr. Kearney, that be here to talk to us.
Yeah.
But, but.
Yeah, no, I get it. I get it. I'll make the motion if you'd like. And I, I would just ask that, in, in due time, that we could ask them to come in and just vocal our, our opinion on what we expect as a board and how we can get some progress to that committee. Because like, you know, we've served on it, and I really don't want to stop it. I think it needs to get done quicker. More done, to, need, a lot more needs to be done. So I don't want to delay it. So I want to make a motion that we approve the nominees for our new school facilities committee.
Is there a second?
Yep, seconds.
Okay, the motion's been made by Mr. Kearney. The motion's been seconded by Mr. Carr. All in favor?
Just do one second.
Yes.
So I inadvertently on another committee ended up in the town governance doghouse. So there's actually a form from the, has to be submitted to the town clerk when we appoint the folks from us. Form goes in. They have to then be sworn in.
Yes.
And they have to take a state ethics online course for an hour.
Yes.
That's an hour you'll just never get back in your life.
Oh, I know. I fell, I was so tired after I did that. I can't believe it.
Yeah.
I can't believe it.
They're really taking that all very seriously. But sometimes the whole of this committee doesn't realize that we have to submit a form once we vote on that. And I think the form resides with the town clerk.
We'll make sure, I'll make sure that we do that.
Perfect.
But I have already informed both nominees that they will need to be sworn in at the town clerk after we approve them, which I was hoping that we'd do tonight.
Yep.
And you just seconded the motion, so to ask for a vote on the motion, we have a voice vote. All on paper, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Obstentions? Okay.
So just the ethics thing also currently has to be taken before the clerk will swear them in.
So what does?
This one hour ethics online course.
Oh.
Yeah, it's new.
That's new.
This is the proverbial doghouse thing.
Okay.
Well, it's only, yeah.
Okay, we'll get that out.
Yeah. So I serve in a couple of state boards too. The town cannot see if I took the ethics thing for a state court. And the state cannot see unless the person says you're okay to look at both.
All right, all right, well, well, thank you.
I learned the hard way.
Okay, well, thank you. Let's get that done.
Yeah, you see the town clerk.
All right, so we'll get that done. Thank you, Mr. Carr. And moving on, and, and, and thank you for approving those members. I'll let the school facility committee chairperson, Jason Earls, know about that as well. Next item is disposal surplus materials. You were given this, this is item F1 in your packet. This is a request that comes in from Principal Alexander Sullivan at the Deer Hill School. She's asking us to dispose of 3,101 titles from the, well, I guess the former Deer Hill Library now. She says they are completely outdated. They don't be, they're not used at all, and it's taking up much-needed space so that we can convert our facility into a more modern learning commons. So she's asking that we dispose them in accordance with Massachusetts General Law's chapter 30B. So unless there's any discussion, I'd entertain a motion to approve the disposal of those materials identified by Principal Sullivan on F1.
Move to approve.
There's been a motion made by Mr. Carr. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Leskey. All in favor, voice vote, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Obstentions? Motion to adjourn to carries. So Dr. Sullivan, please inform Principal Sullivan that she can dispose of those materials.
Ladies Chairman Collins, there was also a, a lead request for disposal of materials.
Thought this was it.
There's one.
Okay, I remember seeing that. I thought this was it.
It's similar, it's a similar request. It's from Osgood. And I will put that here so you can see it.
Thanks.
So this is for, this is in concert with our reading change, curriculum change, using a very antiquated text called Reading Street. And there are 2000, it's, it's 2011, is that what it was? So there's 933 or so texts that, and then 36 of teaching, 36 sets of teacher manuals, and some decodables that really are antiquated and out of use. And she would like to have permission to dispose those.
Okay, is there a motion to dispose of, Dr. Sullivan, could you scroll down so we can see the quantity again? There we go. And there you go, perfect. Is there a motion to dispose of materials identified on the disposable surplus materials form submitted by Principal Farrell at the Osgood School in accordance to the Massachusetts General Law's chapter 30B? Is there a motion to that effect?
Move.
Sorry. Motion's been made by Mr. Carr. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kearney. All in favor, voice vote, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obstentions? Motion to adjourn to carries. We can also inform Principal Sullivan. She's free to do that. To dispose of those items. Principal Farrell, would I say, Principal Sullivan?
You said that earlier, so I do that.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Sullivan.
Will do. Thank you.
All right, moving on. Budget and finance. I mean, Ms. Owen is absent today, so I don't think we have too much by way of budget and finance updates unless you shared anything with either of our superintendent or assistant superintendent.
I think we can wait.
Mr. Kearney, you had earlier, I sort of interrupted you just because we were in the middle of the school updates. You were, I think, going through your checklist of items. And sometimes there's food service or transportation concerns from, from, from you or school facilities committee.
Yeah, I think.
Do you have any updates that you want to share in any of those? We can just sort of, so I'm just sort of blending all of these budget, finance, food service, transportation together. And for you, Mr. Kearney, report for school facilities committee. So feel free to share anything at this point. I mean, Ms. Owen's not here, so we don't have any formal updates.
So there's a new item, and we'd love to meet on this in the near future. So in the same category, as I attended the select board meeting last night, they have approved asphalt and curb work in another part of town. They are looking to do more with some grant money, and they need a list of prioritization. And that would likely take place next spring. For a lot of reasons, I think they tried to bundle these things together. So maybe our committee could work with the school on a list of prioritizations of any.
We'll work on tomorrow, actually.
Excellent. So I think there's an opportunity for us to be for.
Okay, is that all, Mr. Carr?
Yeah, really. When does food service get back? When do we, when does food service?
In the next couple of weeks.
Because I'd like to, if we could go to a meeting next couple of weeks.
Yep. We were intending, I think, on doing that so that we can see
what order.
That, but also to, to see, you know, the new concepts for the elementary. Because I think that we're going to start rolling that. We were going to see that, I think, sort of take form in, in October or something, once they come back and they got their proof in the ground. So we were looking forward to seeing what their action plan was, remember? With regards to elementary, because I think they've done a fairly great job at the high school, middle high school level. But the elementary school offerings and program is still, I think, wanting for improvement. So I think they were going to get to that next. I think that was trying, it was a phased approach.
I also would like to, similar to what like Osgood has for a accepted snacks. I'd like to see that here in our high school, what we can sell in those venues.
I think we can do that all offline in the subcommittee. You can ask for, it's completely transparent. You can get all, all materials, all ingredients, you'll review them with Ms. Farrell, and and we'll do that in subcommittee, I think.
And she's not here, but I would say that if she was, Sue's delightful to work with on this committee because she's really great when there's something that arises very appropriately, gets us organized, keeps the ball in the roll on you. It's great. So it's a real pleasure to work with her in this category.
All right, thank you, Mr. Carr. Anyone want to raise any sort of other issues related to any of these items? And that goes for anyone that's watching at home. I don't think we have any expense.
I have just a quick question about the prioritization. Do you know a timeline on that?
I don't. I think if I followed it correctly, some work is going to be done on another part of town unrelated. The same contractor has return work to do
Yeah.
in the spring. And I think that, again, Brian Joyce is the right person. But it seems that the select people have a pool of money, and they're looking to prioritize what to do with that.
Yeah, I'm planning on doing it.
Yeah, I would say we have probably weeks, but not a month.
Yeah.
Probably to get something.
Yes.
But something like that. I think, you know, I, I mean, it's, you know, with these contractors, they'll have like the little, you know, the nicks in the concrete and stuff like, things like that we want to address, you know. It seems like that work was going to be taking place in the spring. Those are all safety.
All right.
This is one other thing.
Yep.
I, I'd like us to have some serious conversations this year about teenage drinking. Safe Harbor is, would like to and has.
Well, Mr. Kearney, can we just wait till future agenda items?
Yeah, that's where we're at. Okay, so.
We might, we might be there soon. I haven't done the subcommittee reports yet. Are there any subcommittee reports that anyone wants to give? I had no reports. It's summertime.
I've been slipping them in all of meeting.
That's true. You have. That's indeed, Mr. Carr, indeed. Okay, there are no topics that were not reasonably anticipated that I know of. No one's brought anything to my attention. No minutes to approve, I don't believe, Mr. Carr.
Just mentioned one item on minutes. So we are relatively well caught up. Last couple of minutes, Kathy's been wonderful. I had the last couple of minutes. We have a lot that have been approved and have been filed back, but we are behind in posting them to the website. So I'm very glad to come in if that's helpful to anybody to, just get, we, we are in a great place on the minutes, but.
Is that, is that a district thing or is that a town thing? I think it's a town agenda center, right? The minutes and agendas are on the town, the CohassetMass.org website or .gov, whatever it is. I don't think that's the district. I think that's on the agenda center. Remember, you know, you go, and it has the minutes and the agendas there. So I think contact, contact the town manager's office.
Jennifer can also help you guide you with that.
Okay. But I think reach out to the town, because I think reach out to the town first and ask.
How do we do?
Tracy or Michelle Leary, or some, they'll, they'll be able to, I think, guide you in the right direction there.
Yeah, okay, that's sorry. Thank you.
Yeah.
Tracy, well, we'll let them talk about it, but I think.
Yeah, we, I mean.
There's a change in staffing there.
Oh, okay. All right.
In a very, very positive way.
Great. Okay, well, I think that's who we should ask for. And, and you can also, also, you can, you can get in touch with Miss St. Orange. She probably is aware of it as well, as the former secretary.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. And that's a thankless job, and we, we are very appreciative of you and your willingness to do that.
I, so again, you know, Kathy, she's just unbelievable. I don't know how she gets it all done. She's a really amazing lady, but she's terrific to work with. She knows to reach out, and her, the quality of work is superb. It's just terrific.
Yeah, very happy.
You know, I usually get them, then I'll tweak them a little bit and some, and then.
Right.
We're down to the last couple. You know, so.
Perfect. That's great. It's good. We weren't quite behind for a while.
That big uphill thing.
That's good. That's good. Under my leadership, actually, we were quite behind on the minutes, unfortunately. So we all have our weaknesses. Okay, future agenda items. Mr. Kearney?
Go right to me. Anybody else?
Well, you were in the middle of giving some. Alcohol, you know, something.
This is something that I think we should educate more folks on why it's important that teenagers don't drink
More folks on why it's important that teenagers don't drink as opposed to why they should, it's not a rite of passage. You know, the idea that you have alcohol doesn't mean, you know, there's a reason why it's twenty-one. And we should start letting folks know why it's twenty-one and it's the same thing as why you can't drive sixty miles in a thirty mile an hour zone, because. Technically, you can't make the curves, right, so like, I think we need to like, reach out to not only educate. Ourselves of what teenage drinking is. And and let the, let these kids that don't drink understand that it's okay to say that, it's okay, there's nothing wrong with you if you don't drink, like, it's not, and I feel like. I feel like it's been overlooked, there's too much teenage drinking, my kids are telling me this, because my kids don't drink, and and just a, just a. You know, one of my best friends quit drinking and they don't invite him to play hockey anymore because he doesn't party afterwards. I mean, that's a group that he doesn't want to hang around with anybody anyways, but that's what's happening out there, his kids are being, you know, being told it's okay to drink. Yeah, you need, it's a rite of passage and I think we need to have some support here for the kids that don't drink to say, hey, it's okay, you don't have to drink, you don't have to be party. So that's. I'm gonna wrap it up, sorry.
No, I'm just gonna ask you, like, in terms of the agenda item, what do you think, like, like a substance abuse discussion, maybe we can invite, like, Safe Harbor and we can have a.
It'd be great.
Sort of discussion about general substance abuse in the schools, maybe we can even have the principals here and they can sort of give their thoughts about, you know, what.
It's a big.
Not necessarily the elementary principals.
Well, I think it highlights our relationship with Safe Harbor.
Yeah, yeah, and and again, I, you know, Safe Harbor started with, I don't know, seven kids, that's fifty-nine kids now or so. I just want to say that to parents out there now, that one of the best things I did as a parent is get my kids involved, all three of my children involved in it and it's. One of the one most wonderful programs.
Yeah, there's a side after position.
Yeah, because it's like, you know, it's like anything else, like when you're young, your kid's younger and you try to teach him. How to throw the ball, he's not going to listen to you, but he'll listen to your friend, oh, yeah, wow, you know, it's the same kind of thing, like, it's so good to hear it from somebody else than dad, you know, because they're so sick of hearing.
That takes a village, right?
Right.
But I would also suggest that we actually do have elementary principals, because actually, actually, it begins then. And that's where you have your captive audience with your younger, the parents of your younger.
Okay.
So I I think it's really the district.
Okay.
We also look at data from the student surveys that they've done recently. I mean, and over time, I think, to just to see if there are any trends.
I think that would be part of it.
Completely appropriate.
Okay.
We added, we do peer, use peer for six through twelve, so that's an assessment.
And the Y R V S two, which of course Safe Harbor sponsors with us each year.
And we're adding.
Y R V S, I use risk B.
That's the one I was thinking of.
Right, we also. I was thinking of pairs because I think C E F promoted pairs.
Yes, so it was started with a grant, which was amazing, C E F did that, so then we, we absorbed it, because that's the point of getting those grants, right? And we've actually moved it down to third grade, because it does start at three, so we're going to look at that and then implement that, I'm not sure if it will start for third, but we can go.
Remember, we do have our health and wellness curriculum review too, so I mean, this is.
So I'll relate this to Mr. Dial and you and Mr. Dial could talk about how. Want to structure the discussion. Those are some, that's good, so anything, suggestion, any other suggestions, future agenda items?
I'd love to touch base where appropriate with our Metco program.
Yeah.
It would be wonderful. And then. Oh, this Ballin initiative on M C A S.
That's on, I already posted that, because we addressed that earlier.
Great.
Anything else?
No. I had something else to give.
Well. You can always just email Mr. Dial as well.
Okay.
Ms. Leskey?
I'm not sure if you've done it recently, I'd love to hear just sort of a real sort of overview of the arts.
Oh, yes.
From K twelve.
Preacher of the choir over there.
Well, we just had our.
Yeah.
We had an arts, we had an arts spotlight on learning.
We did, but but we did a curriculum review, so.
Arts in that, so that'll come in the fall too, that will work.
Okay. All right, I mean, I think it's a little bit different than what you're looking at, yeah.
You're looking at opportunities for kids.
And just the broadness of the curriculum. Just sort of understanding better what's done and maybe what. Faculty would like to do more of and and have support to do more of, so actually that will come out, that's in the.
Yes, it is.
Process for those in action.
Yeah, I think we can, we can do that, we have, we have a lot of work on, done a lot of work on that.
Okay.
What was the other thing, I'm sorry, I, you said M C A S dollar initiative, what was it right before that?
Edco.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Hearing no further future agenda suggestions, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting. There's, I should note, there is no reason to move an executive session. It's always there, but skipping over that because there's no reason. The motion to adjourn has been made by Mr. Carr, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Leskey, all in favor, voice vote, aye. Opposed, extensions, motion unanimously carries, the meeting is adjourned, thank you all, have a nice evening.
Thank you, good rest of your summer, see you all soon.